Good evening. We would like to call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome all those who are here in chambers for our City Council meeting, and of course, welcome anybody who might be viewing on our YouTube channel. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council held at 5:00 on Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. We'd like to turn some time over to our City Clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite those who would like to participate in our invocation tonight. It will be given by Pastor Kent Simmons with the Canyon Community Church, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Counselor Ward, would you lead us in that? If we could all stand.
Our gracious God, we come to you in humility. We ask for the gifts of wisdom and administration to govern all the citizens of Kingman well. We pray that you make the work of those who lead us a source of great accomplishment and of responsible fiscal stewardship. For each member of the council and for our mayor, may your spirit guide their actions and their decisions. May we as a community and community members support and acknowledge their efforts. Now we pray for your grace and mercy to be upon us as we accept the responsibility of governance, and may our community flourish for its residents. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one on our agenda, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. First, we have Mr. Andrew Shea, if he could come forward. Welcome, Andrew.
Hello, council, like Mr. like mayor. My name is Andrew Shea, and I am a resident of Kingman. Previously, I lived in a rural desert of California county that borders Arizona and Mexico. As you consider landscape, water restrictions, it is better to take a preventive approach on implementing a plan than trying to find a cure after the plan has been implicated or implemented. Remember not too long ago that a big tall cypress tree across from City Hall, it just turned brown and died? Well, how did it die? Is it a blight killing the cypress trees? Is it a fungus? Is it a dust of mites? Are these pests wind-driven when the conditions are present? Around 2016, a municipality in California tried implementing restrictions on landscaping, watering. It caused catastrophic results to non-native trees, so devastating, the city then went back to when you can water whenever you want. In that California city, they were not careful with the species of trees planted when it came to native insects. Non-native mesquite trees were heavily damaged or died from the native boring insects. The ash trees needed a lot of water in that city, and there were dead ash trees throughout the landscape. As the city comes up with a plant, we need to encourage native trees, bushes, succulents, cactus, and yuccas that are drought tolerant of native insects. On watering a schedule, when grass and trees get water on the same zone, what happens when you can't water the grass? Like turf and trees need to be separated by individual zones. Consider plentiful watering schedules throughout the summers during prolonged drought with the preparation that the city can lead by example to keep our urban forests surviving and thriving. Thank you.
Andrew, thank you. And Mr. Mike McAvoy.
Mr. Watkins, council. On April 8th, 2024, Judge Burroughs' small claims courtroom. Judge refused to listen to all my testimony about barking dogs that live next door. He stated that the complaint is just a neighborhood dispute, and though I felt he needed to hear my complete story, which I conveyed to him to no avail, a judge is there to form an opinion through carefully weighing all the evidence, which he refused to do. The incompetency shown by this judge shows lack of professionalism toward the strength of our justice system. Telephonic evidence was presented by an expert that moved to Delaware and had five years veterinary experience, along with over 30 years nursing experience. Expert testified that she also witnessed Misty's unusual behavior during the vicious barking of my neighbor's dogs. Expert brought Misty about a quarter mile away to her yard to evaluate her behavior. In a relatively short time, Misty became more relaxed and playful. That was proof that changing Misty's environment did affect her ability to become a normal dog. Judge Burroughs' typical liberal justification dismissed expert's testimony due to her not conforming, continuing her veterinary license as she moved forward into her successful nursing career. When I go to the doctor, I'm asked how I feel, or does it hurt? Plethora of questions to resolve what's going on. Judge Burroughs also dismissed a report from the finest veterinary doctor in Kingman, Dr. Taylor Williams. Dr. Williams asked questions, reviewed Misty's past, and added her recent signature to her history. In her report, anxiety, quote, "anxiety is a large part of Misty's seizures, which seem to trigger them." Misty has to continue to take her medications two times a day. My neighbor in front of Judge Burroughs lied while making excuses left and right on how she controls her dog's barking. She brought three witnesses and three dog collars still in the boxes to dispute my claim of dog's excessive barking. Her witnesses included two of her sisters that don't live there and someone who used to live across the street. Regardless, two and a half years, she's never put collars on her dogs and continues to jeopardize the health of my dog by letting her dogs bark excessively. After the hearing, she still refuses to put the collars on the dogs. I'm asking this council to strengthen the barking laws already on the books and adopt financial citations that would ensure more peaceful neighborhoods. Ordinance 1681, Section 326, I would be proud to participate in the restructuring of this existing non-law. Enforcement is nonexistent as the ordinance is written today. This council believes this is an isolated event. I would encourage you to view City Council meeting on 11/22/21, where Mike Rover was cuffed in the hallway after the meeting. January 2024, a rerun, a quote from Judge Judy, "Everybody is entitled to peacefully enjoy their property." Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Peggy Tipping.
Good evening, City Council and mayor. I live out behind Home Depot, and I don't get downtown too often, but last month I came down and parked in your, I don't know who designed your new streets, but it's very hard now to back out. There's not really enough room for cars that are coming, and if you're trying to get out, I don't understand to waste all that money on a design that's not really correct. And I know that there's other people that have talked about this and other design things about the light posts and stuff like that that are not right. So I don't know who put it up. I don't get to come down very often because of my health, so I don't know how this was accomplished or who designed it, or if it was approved and who approved it. I don't know if you put it in the paper or not, but anyway, I'd like to have more information on it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Peggy. And of course, to all three of you that shared your comments from the public, once again, council, we have heard that, and our deputy city manager, and so these are things that we can take up at a later date. Thank you. Item number two, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have actually a fairly long list, councilors, items A through Q. Are there any of these items that need to be removed for discussion? Okay. Seeing none, then we have a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. We're going to move fast today. Item number three, old business. A, updated 2024 City Council regular meeting calendar. At the November 11th, 2023, regular City Council meeting, the council adopted the 2024 City Council regular meeting calendar. Since that time, the date for the primary election has been changed to July 30th, 2024. This change will allow the council to now meet on August 6th, 2024. An updated calendar is attached for council consideration and adoption. Staff recommends approval, and we'll turn some time over to our City Clerk, Annie.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. It's pretty self-explanatory. I'm giving you back an opportunity to meet and take care of some business. So unless there's any questions, yeah, that's it. We just want to make sure, since council had taken formal action in adopting the annual meeting calendar, that we brought it back to re-adopt with that date being freed up for meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks, Annie. Council, any discussion? Pretty simple matter. We have a motion then approving item 3A, updated 2024 City Council regular meeting calendar.
So moved.
All second. Either one.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, new business. We have none. Item number five, department reports. We have none. Something else I don't think is available. Announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. We are moving right along. I don't think we're going to break the record, but we're getting there. Okay. Deputy mayor, I mean deputy manager. See, I'm trying to give her your job still, aren't I?
The only announcement that I have is that we are excited that on Monday, our new city manager, Tim Walsh, will be on board, and I know the mayor and council are excited. I know city staff is excited, and I know the citizens are excited, so just wanted to make that formal announcement.
Tina, are you excited? Never mind.
No comment.
Thank you, Tina. Counselor Walker.
Nothing.
Counselor Savage.
Nothing.
Counselor Ward.
Not.
Counselor Staley.
Counselor.
Counselor Eric.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Wow. You guys do want to get out of here fast, don't you? Okay, I do want to make a couple of announcements. As you know, the city encourages murals, and there actually is a tomorrow evening at 2:17 East Annie Devine, which is in between Mud Coffee Shop, right? And the post office is down on Annie Devine. There is a new, if you've simply, some of you have driven by already, it's a nice yellow wall with a beautiful mural about it, advertising Kingman and some of the attributes that we have here. And so anyway, there will be a celebration for the, a reception for that muralist, Roy Harvey, and the unveiling of the mural, of his first mural here in Arizona. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, that everybody knows about that. It's a beautiful mural. I drove by it again today, and it's a beautiful mural. Also, we are coming towards the end of the month, and always in April is the biker weekend down in Laughlin, and of course, a lot of activities here on Route 66. And so I just want to remind our citizens to please be observant. There will be a lot more motorcycles in town, and to please be careful. Look twice, even three times if you have to, and make sure that a motorcycle's not coming. And so we don't want anybody hurt, and we want everybody to enjoy our beautiful city of Kingman. Once again, I don't have anything else after that. I appreciate it. Item number seven, council requests for future reports and updates. Wow. We're moving along. Item number eight, executive session. Carl, did I forget to read the executive session the right first, or was it not on there?
If you did, I didn't catch it, so.
I forgot to read it. I forgot to read it. So do you want me to read it now?
Well, you can just read the section.
Just read the section, okay. Item number eight, A, executive session, amended city attorney annual review. The city attorney has requested that council enter into executive session pursuant to ARS-, ARS 38-431.03A1 for the city attorney's annual evaluation and salary adjustment request. Discussion and possible action. Can we have a motion then from council to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Once again, we thank everybody. You're more than welcome to stick around. We're not sure how long we're going to be in executive session.
Welcome back. We are back from executive session and we've discussed with the city attorney matters that we needed to talk with him about as far as his annual evaluation. Can we have a motion accepting our decisions in executive session concerning his evaluation and salary?
I'll second.
We have motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are adjourned. Have a good evening.